If you want to sign up to speak tonight, please sign up now. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:00. And we're going to call this meeting to order. We will have our invocation by Mr. Don Smith and our pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tim Cobb. Would you please stand?
Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this opportunity to have this council meeting. I pray that you will give wisdom and knowledge to the mayor, city manager, and council, and guide all of us to support our city council and city government. As we approach the Fourth of July, let us remember we are all Americans. We are all children of God. Let us resist organizations and individuals that want to divide us by the way we look, our background, our income, or the ideas we have. Remember, we are all God's children. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mayor Pro Tim Cobb. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, my screen went up. So we have a motion to approve the agenda by Councilmember Solomon, Councilmember Board.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Board. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Presentations. Madam Secretary.
PR 23016 Youth Entrepreneurship Program Presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia. Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for accepting my invitation to come and speak before the council tonight because this is a great program for our youth for the summer, and it's open to all of our youth in Colleen. You can start whenever you want to.
Hello. My name is Dorina, Ms. D. Garcia. I'm an entrepreneur and multi-business owner. We host a youth entrepreneurship program that is free to the community. Our youth entrepreneurship program is normally held for two hours each month, and the purpose of this program is to get children to think outside the box and to create ways to generate business opportunities and income as they begin to prepare for their future. This has been an empowering and amazing five months of our, of youth with our community, empowering our youth program along with Inspired Designs Youth Entrepreneurship Program, which this year's 20 years began this year in January. The program benefits youth ages nine to 17 and includes a few graduating high school seniors as well. The youth were able to come out and learn business and life skills relating to business in a kid-friendly and intimate safe zone. Our program will end with teens receiving their own business cards and the overnight trip at Six Flags, which we just came back from yesterday. So it was pretty amazing. We have been empowering the youth with programs such as this and give back for over, as I said, 20 years, and since COVID, this is our first relaunch of the program, so we were excited and working with the youth again. The participants were provided free lunch, and the meeting, the last meeting was held at the Inspired Designs Hair Salon and Barber Shop Grand Palace location on Stan Sluter Loop, and I have a few pictures and slides. So on the first one, our, we'll have, shows one of our youth, and his business is catering. So on the, I guess, the left-hand side, and then at the bottom are the youth as they're doing, finishing up their business plans. So we started with an idea. I wanted them to start with an idea of something that they love to do. If you start with a business that you love to do, it's never worked. So I wanted them to start with two hobbies, and then we elaborated on those two hobbies and expanded and taught them about business plans and in a ICS code. So it was really amazing. I'm go ahead and go to the second one. We had entrepreneurs to come out as well as judges, mayors, radio hosts. The one in the green, he's actually did the last program that we hosted before COVID, and that's where we took 18 graduating seniors on a five-day cruise to, with Carnival. I think there should be a video. I would like to welcome you to Inspired Designs Youth Program for Entrepreneurship inside of Inspired Designs Hair Salon and Barber Shop Grand Palace location. We are located in Colleen at 4001 East Stan Sluter Loop, Suite A 104. This Saturday on May 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will be holding our meeting for our youth entrepreneurship program. Come on and follow me.
We never knew about finances. We never knew about having your own business because we retired, you go to work, you retire, and you get self-security. But now to be able to open up the eyes of these young children and show them that the sky is the limit, there's nothing they can't.
It's definitely very dear to me because I worked here before, and also it'll inspire many youth, especially of color, to be a better person, a better business person, a better elected person, or whatever they, whatever they put their heart into. But they'll definitely do, so you definitely don't want to miss out on this program. It's a good program.
I was out, and I learned something. I'm 53 years old. Your child can learn something as well, amen. I believe it's a blessing for us all to encourage our youth to find out what is their niche. What is that one thing that they love to do, and even so, to have that to be their occupation? What a blessing it is to wake up Monday through Friday and do the things that you love to do, and that's what D. is all about. So what a blessing for me to be a part of it. I'm grateful for it, and even more so, I just pray her strength through the whole thing. So thank you so much. We look forward to you being there. You know the deal.
I'm here for the youth program, and I got to speak in front of the kids, and it was a lot, it was inspirational to me because I got to talk in front of them. They didn't know a lot of things, and I got to educate them on stuff that I didn't learn until I was 30. So by them learning around like 15, 14, and learning how to do business plans, it's awesome. I would do that, I would take advantage of that and bring my kids down. Thank y'all. The youth program is where it's at, at D.
The address is 4001 East Stan Sluter Loop, Suite A 104, Colleen, Texas. And again, you heard it from our speakers. The kids come out, they have a great time, they learn a lot, they eat, they get to have fun, they earn money, they win. So that's, kind of sums it up. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions of her? All right. Thank you, Ms. D., for presenting that and participating and assisting our youth with something to do during the summertime, and it's a great program, and I've listened to your speakers. We didn't learn that in school, especially when I was coming up. Now they try to teach it, but you really don't know how to balance a check, or if you want to be an entrepreneur and what you want to do in the future. So you're giving them a gateway to make those decisions at a younger age, and I appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Residents, you have four minutes to speak. Counsel, if you have any questions or follow-up, you have one minute. And we will start off with Julie Oliver. Good evening, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for having me again. It's always a pleasure to see you. I'm going to start tonight by reminding us of Chief Kimball's report earlier this year, I think it was in March. Four months into Prop A being in effect, 146 people were released under Prop A, misdemeanor marijuana offenses only, for Class A, Class B offenses. Let's annualize that. Let's take that 146 for those four months, spread it out over 12 months. That means for a full year, 438 arrests were avoided because of Prop A. Now assume, and I think this is a conservative estimate, that it costs $500 per arrest and booking, could be upwards of $1,000 per arrest and booking after the county attorney said that he keeps people in jail for five days when they've committed a misdemeanor offense, so five days in jail for a misdemeanor offense because he's understaffed at the county attorney's office. But just assume the low end, $500 per arrest. The city saves conservatively $200,000 every year through this ordinance. If you pull that up to the high end of the cost, Colleen is saving over $400,000 annually through this ordinance. That's taxpayer-real money. Counter that with the frivolous lawsuit that did not have to be filed by the Bell County Attorney's Office. Nothing ever forced him to file this. Ken Paxton's office did not call him and ask him to stand in the place of the Attorney General. So even if Colleen spends money on this lawsuit, if you do the math, even at the maximum that y'all are asking for tonight, and I doubt that'll get that high, that's just a maximum threshold, Colleen would still be saving $150,000 every year by having this ordinance on the books. That, to me, makes good financial sense for the city. And that's not even counting the community cost of somebody losing their job because they're in jail for five days. I don't know how many of y'all get to leave work for five days and still get to keep your job afterwards, but if you lose your job, that likely means you're losing your housing, and it's a terrible domino effect, and that also is a cost to this community. Now, I also know, because I sat on a call with Chief Kimball and the NAACP a while ago, that Colleen PD is under-resourced, meaning it has vacancies in its department that it can't fill or hasn't been able to fill. So the police officers you currently have now can allocate their time on more important crimes, including unsolved crimes in the city, and I think Chief Kimball also said it best at that meeting, and this is a quote from him. "This ordinance has allowed them, the police department, to work smarter, and it allowed KPD to be very selective in the cases that they deal with now, so it frees them up to do some other things." So I will ask you tonight to remember the 17,000 voters who voted for this, know that this is a political frivolous lawsuit that's been brought by Bell County, and then I ask y'all to consider the cost that y'all are saving by avoiding these arrests. Now again, these are misdemeanor, Class A, Class B offenses only, nothing else. I think Chief Kimball went on to say, if the warrant has been issued, they honor the warrant. He said that if there's a gun found in the car, because y'all repealed the part that said smell can't be used as probable cause, so PD still has the opportunity to use smell as probable cause, then you have the ability to recover the guns that he was worried about. And I think he testified to that. So I am telling y'all, this ordinance is saving the city money, and it's saving taxpayers' money, and it is unfortunate that the county attorney and the district attorney of this county have decided to bring a frivolous lawsuit against the city, but I ask that y'all continue to defend it. And if y'all have any questions for me, happy to answer.
Thank you. Louis Minor. Good evening. So you have four minutes.
Good evening, counsel.
Sir, I apologize, Commissioner Minor. I apologize, sir.
No, 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 no. I come to you as a resident of the city of Colleen tonight, as a voter of the city of Colleen, and as one of the over 17,000 voters that voted in favor of Proposition A back in November of last year. We did not get into this position. We did not ask to get into this position. That was brought on by the county. So we had no option but to defend the ordinance. Y'all voted to defend that ordinance. Y'all voted to uphold the citizens' rights here, the citizen ordinance that we voted for. Now we ask you to continue to defend that. The citizens will continue to support you, and that's what you need to consider. Something interesting happened last week, at least interesting to me. The Supreme Court ruled in an eight-to-one decision that the state of Texas did not have legal standing suing the federal government for allocation of resources in regards to immigration enforcement. The state of Texas wanted the federal government to maximize enforcement of the current immigration laws. The Supreme Court said the state of Texas did not have standing to direct the federal government to use resources to maximize that enforcement. So let's look at what's going on now. The county is asking the city of Colleen to maximize enforcement of the marijuana laws here. We voted to deprioritize Class A and Class B, Class C misdemeanors for marijuana possession. That's what you need to defend. You have the right, we have the right as a city to allocate those resources as we seem fit, and this is what we decided. This is what y'all need to support, support the citizens, and they will support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Bass. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Thank you, mayor. The Colleen Daily Herald quoted a council member stating, "I realize we got ourselves into this, and we didn't have to." This is an inaccurate statement. The council members did not get the city into this. The people of Colleen, the voters, got us into this. Why? Because we, the people of Colleen, want the police to not arrest citizens for possessing personal use amounts of marijuana if they're committing no other crime. Why do we want this? The reason is because arresting people for personal use amounts of marijuana is unjust. That's why 70% of us voted yes for Prop A. The only way the city council could have avoided this lawsuit is by ignoring the will of the people. That would be wrong. Please understand that the reason the commissioners filed this lawsuit is a political reason. They hate Ground Game Texas because Ground Game Texas is a liberal, democratic organization. They do not want to concede a victory to Democrats in their own backyard. But the people of Colleen, they don't care about Ground Game Texas. The people of Colleen were not endorsing Ground Game Texas. They were expressing their belief that arresting people who choose to use marijuana is unjust. Ground Game Texas gave us the opportunity to vote on this issue, but we made up our own mind. Have you read the attorney's defense of the city? It's a very strong defense of the right of municipalities to control their own affairs. Yes, of course, you should pay an attorney to defend our city against this unjust lawsuit. I hope you do not surrender your independence and the rights of the citizens of Colleen to the Bell County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Christina Wright. Christina Wright? Oh, Kristen Wright. I apologize.
It's okay. I'm actually not sure if this is the right section, though. I thought I was on number 17.
Okay. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It's not the right one. I was in public here. Mr. Michael Fornino. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Michael Fornino, Colleen, citizen. Okay, here we are again. Numbers have already been stated, 17,000 voters, okay? Talking about stunts, that this stunt by the county with this lawsuit against us. By that math and that rubric, we should be having people hanging from the rafters right now. Where's all the support? 17,000 people came out and voted? Look at the numbers of the last election, it was barely 2,000. Okay, that was, that's a stunt right there. Who are the authorities on this? Once again, Ms. Oliver comes up here to advocate for this nonsense. She doesn't live here. She is allegedly an attorney. She should know how civics works and how you change a state law. With regard to Commissioner Minor, this, where the Supreme Court just ruled against, you know, as a principle, in contrast, Texas and Louisiana don't, as a state, two states don't have standing? I mean, that's a travesty right there. Who stands for us? All this support, okay? With respect to Mr. Bass, where he stated about the medical uses and all that, okay, there's laws for that and all that, but let's take a look at the reality. We're paying for three sets of lawyers. We're paying Ms. Clements with our tax money. Now we're going to shell out another $50,000 to this other law firm that's going to lose against state law, which I say, there's a way to change law. Apparently, Ms. Oliver forgot those law classes, and I'm sick of hearing it, and all the twisting and the linguistic jujitsu to make that happen. It doesn't wash. And then we're also paying the lawyers on the prosecution side. We're getting paid three times. We talked about a stunt. We all lose. It's our money. That's $50,000. It could be better spent on the health care benefits that are also on the agenda tonight. The police and fire woefully inadequate with mental health care. They go to what? Let's just call it an overwhelming event. They basically get three free hugs and everything else has come out of their pocket. That's appalling. I used to hold a job with the United States Army. I said, did, and performed many horrible things that I hope that you folks never do. And from time to time, I go out to the VA and I take advantage of the benefits guaranteed to me by law. Why can't we guarantee those same benefits to police and fire? Also, when you take a look at solid waste, pardon me, Bureau of Labor statistics states that garbage collection is the fifth most dangerous job in the country. Yet, for them to get vaccinated for hepatitis A and hepatitis B, they have to pay out of pocket. Those are things that they would be reasonably expected to be exposed to, if not tetanus or any other thing. That's $50,000 we could be spending on a better health care program from, a better deal from the one we've got, or just go out and shop for a better health care provider. I mean, this is just absolute nonsense. So going back to Prop A with all of this, this is just absolute nonsense. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get up here and drag people's names through the mud, but you know their reputations, you know their names. If there's a stunt to be had, it's at our expense by interlopers that have no business. Ms. Oliver doesn't live in this town. The unfortunate part is, again, it's parsing it away from what Mr. Bass had to say. It's a medical thing, and it's a doctor, and it's allowed by law, that's different. Cop pulls somebody over for having marijuana, like, here's my card or my prescription or whatever, it's not issue. But Ms. Oliver doesn't live here, and she doesn't have to listen to the sirens every night, gunfire, that is all related to people buying and selling of marijuana. It doesn't matter what they want it for, the money and the violence is coming largely either directly from or tangential to the trade in such a thing. So I'm tired of hearing from outside interlopers telling us what to do in our town. If they want to do that, have them live here, have them bear the burden, just like the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jonathan Okray. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council, city manager. I stand before you tonight to address you about RS 23094. And I hope by this time, each member of council has been provided correspondence, I provided to the city manager in reference to this agenda item. Looks like you haven't. Who hasn't received it? Nobody. Wow. But anyway, I did leave a copy of it with the city secretary, all right? And what I did send, I attempted or was intending to present it here in its entirety, but I won't be able to do that. The time limits will not allow me to do that. So let me just tell you about some of the things that I did share with the city manager. One has to do with this, the rationale that I've experienced or have seen with the attorney that is representing the city. He seems to think that the county attorney, city, district attorney has no standing. But this is a simple rationale I come up with. The county and district attorneys have the authority and the ability to bring criminal suit that require beyond a reasonable doubt threshold resolution within any court within the state of Texas, okay? And now that this case is at the appellate level and roles are reversed, in which the city is the plaintiff, it was seemingly, it was seen that seemingly the city carries the burden of proof that the defendants, who are the city, the county attorney, and the district attorney, have standing. And since this is civil, we're talking about preponderance of evidence. In the constitution of this state, the laws of this state, it defines their jurisdictional ability within, within this county. So I think they do have, they do have standing. You're also talking, we're only hearing about $450 an hour with the attorney, but realistically, for an hour, it could, hypothetically, it could be $1,045 an hour, or it could be $8,000 a day, if we really look at it. And you're also talking about, everybody's talking about, we're not talking about the new $50,000. You're talking about exceeding, exceeding $50,000 indefinitely to defend this law or to defend this ordinance. I did list a few things that you need to, and I'll just state them right here. First thing, you should, you should consider establishing this resolution pending, moving it forward. For one, what I see from the attorney and the representation we're receiving, this case hinges on dismissing county and district attorney as having standing. That's what he's, and that's what he's going to do down at the, at the Court of Appeals. So that defense, any defense that's doing that, we need to stop, cease and desist from that immediately. Secondly, you need to minimally consider fixing a finite dollar amount to which, for this agreement, and then stipulating a resolution at the lowest, lowest level of competent jurisdiction. You do that all the time when you're talking about, in terms of, when you're talking in terms of a bid to bring some type of public interest type of thing. Just the lowest bid.
Sir, your time is up.
Your time is too.
Melissa Brown. Good evening. You have four minutes.
City council is still missing a person, still a vacancy. You want to vote on your governing standards that are going to determine how the city council is run for the is ran for the next year, how citizens are treated for the next year, what our rights or not rights are for the next year. You're gonna be voting on how you are supposed to act and proceed for the next year without one council member being able to have a say in it, who will still have to abide by it for a year. It should be postponed, tabled until after that vacancy has been filled. When it comes to the attorney for, for defense on Prop. A, what we do pay for is for the Bell County Communications Center, which is dispatched, we have to do that anyway. As far as the report that is being lauded, it's meaningless. What was the year-over-year change in dismissals? We don't know that, because all it said is these are the number of people we let go over the past three months. We don't know how many people were released on those same charges for the same three months the year prior, to see if Prop. A had any effect whatsoever. When the chief said that they were working more I know, I'm just gonna let them make sure they can hear it too. Thank you. When the police chief said that they were working more efficiently and smarter, he implied that it was, he said to you, that it meant that they were searching harder in vehicles to find other things besides just the marijuana or just the paraphernalia. In fact, it has caused our police department to start looking deeper into everything, doing deeper searches in areas where they wouldn't have before, not just saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna give you this citation, we're gonna bring you in, we're gonna release you and destroy this, or take it into evidence, whatever they would have been doing before, now they're looking harder to try to find other things. So congratulations, Ground Game. You have been able to, to make this even worse for the people, because now they're facing stiffer penalties for, for harsher crimes. No resources are being mandated, other than the law firm that we're paying, and we now want to pay for a mid-trial appeal of standing in jurisdiction, where the attorney that we have hired has implied that we will lose it, based on his statement, when he said, that we will be back in district court in a few months to hear the rest of the case and the rest of the evidence. If he was so convinced that we were going to win this appeal on standing in jurisdiction, why would he ever say, we'll see you back here in district court in a few months to hear the rest of the evidence? That, that was our attorney that we've hired giving up, throwing their hands up in the air and saying, you know what, we're just doing this to stall for time. We're doing this to get a little bit of extra money, and like it was mentioned, that amount that you're talking about per hour is only for one level of attorney. You have to think about all of the other fees associated with it, and the paralegals and the assistants that'll be working on it. Also, this can't be just against Ground Game Texas, because they're Democrats, because I thought Prop. A and marijuana reform was a bipartisan issue. Bipartisan. It's not us against them, it's not one versus the other, but this is about using our money smartly and having fiscal responsibility, and we need to just put an end to this now.
Thank you. Akka Nagoo. Good evening, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Cobb had clicked on.
Right, she was gonna speak last, that's why I didn't call on her, but thank you for catching that, Madam Secretary.
Just real quick for clarification, on the last speaker, Mrs. Brown, can she say whether she was for it or against it? And maybe the speakers, as they come on, because a lot of times, you guys say a lot of good stuff, but it looks like, I'm not clear if it's up or down. So when you come up and you say, I'm for it or against it. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Councilwoman Segarra, I am against paying any more money towards this attorney. Thank you.
Ma'am, I apologize for that. You have the floor now.
No worries. Madam Mayor, council members, if, I want to remind you, when Chief Kimball spoke earlier this year regarding the results of the Proposition A, he was asked at one point by the mayor, so this proposition, Proposition A didn't have a detrimental effect on crime, correct? I remember his answer. He said, "I didn't say that." And he refused to elaborate. To me, that speaks volumes. He refused to answer the question, and he said, "I didn't say that." I want to thank you for listening to the voters. This is what the voters wanted. The majority of voters wanted to pass Proposition A. And also for working so hard to come up with a compromise. And you're in a very tough position, and I appreciate all your efforts. Now you're in a very different position. It's no longer about Proposition A, about marijuana, it's about, does this make business sense? The majority of residents voted to approve Proposition A, however, those voters were never asked if they're willing to pay an unspecified, unknown amount of money for an unknown length of time in case of a lawsuit. The votes could be very different if you add an unknown unlimited cost to defend Proposition A. We don't know, there are just too many unknowns. On top of all the unknowns, we do know that the likelihood of winning the lawsuit is very small, if not even zero. Even the district judge said in court, at one of the hearings, that this ordinance is blatantly illegal. Proposition A removes punishment for a Class A misdemeanor involving marijuana possession. A municipality cannot make laws less strict than state law, which is what Proposition A is doing. And this is one of the reasons, I believe, the likelihood of winning is almost nonexistent. You cannot take away from state law. You cannot add to it and make it more strict, but you cannot take away from it. Also, Class A misdemeanor marijuana possession is four ounces. That is a very large amount. That is a one gallon Ziploc bag full of marijuana. That does not qualify as recreational personal use. I would say it's very likely that person is looking to sell, but right now, they get away with it. In addition, the city can spend all that money on other things that are a bigger priority, like fixing the roads, like Chaparral Road, for example, and so many other roads that need to be repaired. I, my suggestion is to, you can deprioritize marijuana possession. You don't have to pass a law that's unlawful. You can talk to the police department and have them come up with a policy to deprioritize arrests on marijuana, but without changing the law or passing a law that's not even a legal law. The argument that we don't want to ruin young lives is not a good argument. Criminal mischief, Class A misdemeanor, that ruins lives too. What are we gonna do? Are we gonna let them go too? If somebody makes a bad decision and breaks into a car, that's a Class A misdemeanor? Are we gonna say, well, we don't want to ruin lives? My position is that you don't have to pass a nonlawful ordinance. The best thing to do is either remove it completely and speak with the police department to deprioritize marijuana possession, or modify the ordinance to make it more reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I overlook anyone? Did it turn that form in before we move on? All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, consent agenda.
MN 23014, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of May 23, 2023. RS 23095, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the renewal of Cisco Unified Communications Manager and Flex Support Plan in an amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred forty dollars. RS 23096, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the renewal of a Cisco Security Enterprise Agreement in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. RS 23097, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 23-30 for the hangar door replacement project to NNAC Inc. in an amount of one hundred ten thousand, three hundred forty dollars and thirty-four cents. RS 23098, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 23-32 for the terminal HVAC improvements Phase Two vestibule door upgrades at Colleen-Forthood Regional Airport to Valcorp Enterprises LLC in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars. RS 23099, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the replacement and installation of ductwork at Fire Station One and Fire Station Eight by the Brant Companies LLC in the amount of eighty-one thousand, two hundred sixty dollars. RS 23100, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 23-21 East Tremere Road Bridge Repair to JHL Construction in the amount of three hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. RS 23101, consider a memorandum resolution to amend the Heart of Texas Landscape and Irrigation Agreement by adding nine fire stations to the current landscape agreement contract, and renewing the agreement for an additional year in an amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-four, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents for FY 23. RS 23102, consider a memorandum resolution accepting a Federal Aviation Administration Airport Terminal Program grant for the solar project at Colleen-Forthood Regional Airport. RS 23103, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment reports for the quarter ended March 31, 2023. RS 23104, consider a memorandum resolution renewing group employee medical and pharmaceutical benefits with United Healthcare and Employee Dental Insurance with MetLife effective October 1, 2023. RS 23105, consider a memorandum resolution appointing council members to audit committee.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmember, Mayor Portem Cobb.
Mayor, I'm gonna wait until we get to our resolution, item number fourteen, before I speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember, can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Bullitt.
Second.
We have a motion, thank you, sir. We have a motion by Councilmember Alvarez, and we have a second by Councilmember Bullitt. All in favor, yes. Carry six to zero, Madam Secretary. Whenever you ready, Madam Secretary, resolutions.
Excuse me one moment. RS 23094, consider a memorandum resolution ratifying an agreement with Shields Winups for legal services.
Thank you. City Attorney Clements, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll go through this presentation if you have any questions. The background here on the, on this legal services agreement is that in November 2022, a majority of electors voted to pass the city's marijuana enforcement ordinance. In December, Bell County authorized its attorneys to file suit against the city of Colleen related to the ordinance, and then in February, the city engaged Shields Winups to provide legal services with regard to potential litigation regarding the marijuana enforcement ordinance. And then on April 11th, Bell County did file a lawsuit against the city of Colleen for declaratory and injunctive relief to invalidate the marijuana enforcement ordinance that was passed by a majority of voters in November. To continue to defend the lawsuit, legal expenses will exceed fifty thousand dollars, and the alternatives are to not ratify the agreement for legal services, or to ratify the agreement for legal services, and staff recommends that council ratify the agreement to continue to defend the lawsuit.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cagle?
I don't really have a statement for or against this, just I want to remind everybody that the city of Colleen was sued. We've been blamed for spending a lot of money. We're the ones that were sued, and I think the council did the best they could. You're put in a difficult position, and you crafted, I think, which was a pretty elegant compromise to respect the will of the voters, but not take tools away from our police department. I don't think we were really arresting anybody for an ounce or two of marijuana if there was nothing else. That rarely ever happened. So we all got put in a tough spot by people on both sides of this. I, I think, if you want to use the word stunt, it applies to both sides. And so now you're put in a difficult position, and City Attorney and I are here to answer any questions. It's difficult to have the discussion in public about the money, because that goes into your legal defense strategy, and this can go into executive session for some parts of it. If you want to do that, or you can have it in, in public as well.
Yes, sir. And I guess my, my question is, can you tell us how much we spent so far? Or do we have to go behind closed session for that answer?
No, I can tell you how much we spent so far. We spent a little over forty-two thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And that actually was my first question, is how much do we spend? And I know that when this proposition was on the ballot, it garnered, I think, almost seventy percent of the voters, and now it seems like, you know, about the same amount is against the city paying these, the money. And so my question, my first question to our city attorney, I don't know if you can answer this one, but what happens if we do not approve this?
For those questions, I, for those questions, I do believe that would be subject to attorney-client privilege. It is, it is related to pending litigation, and I would recommend that be in closed session.
Yeah.
So, Councilmember Segarra, council, do y'all want to go in closed session to have this discussion, so we can go into more detail before y'all make a vote?
Well, can we ask a few more? And you can tell me whether the rest of the questions go behind closed doors or not? Can I do that?
Sure.
And so, so, because my next question, and I don't know if this goes behind closed doors or not, but, you know, we're, we're like put in the middle, you know, as a city. You know, we got the county, and then we got the people. And so it looks like, you know, we're taking the burden of deciding whether this is legal or not. Is there any of the other, is the county using outside counsel? Are they having expenses also? Do we know that?
I did not know all of their expenses, but I don't know that they're using outside counsel. They are litigation attorney, I mean, that's what they, they litigate cases, is what they do.
Okay. And then, and then, again, this may be something that we have to do behind closed doors, because I know that as council, we did come up with some kind of settlement. And so my question was, in reaching out to the county, maybe there is some kind of settlement that we can do with them, and I don't know if we've actually had that conversation with them.
There have been conversations, but as far as what those conversations have been, or any future conversations, that would be something I would like to have that conversation. That would be subject to attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Yeah, and then, yeah, I'm okay with, you know, going behind closed doors, maybe after me, or whenever, that's the mayor, I'm sorry, but, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Portem.
I'm gonna make a statement. The challenge of leadership is to be strong, but not be rude, to be kind, but not weak, to be bold, but not a bully, to be thoughtful, but not lazy, to be humble, but not timid, be proud, but not arrogant, have humor, but without folly. The statement that I would like to make is that I've never been for the decriminalization of marijuana, we all know that. But I'm always for, whether it's the council or a man or woman that walks in a courtroom to be, to have a defense team.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Anything else before I call this meeting into closed door, closed-door meeting? Pursuant to the Texas Open Amendment Law, VTC- Pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law V T C A Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting for the City Council on the 27th of June 2023 at 5:49 PM. Under the following authority, Section 55.071, consultation with attorney, the City Council will receive advice from legal counsel regarding the ratification of an agreement for legal service related to the pending litigation. Agenda item RS-23-094, the council will now go in closed session. The council is calling this, we're calling the meeting back to order at 6:31 PM. We're at a closed session. Council RS-23-094, what is your pleasure? Mayor Paul Tim.
Madam Mayor, I want to make the statement one more time. The challenge of leadership is to be strong but not rude, to be kind but not weak, be bold but not a bully, be thoughtful but not lazy, to be humble but not timid, to be proud but not arrogant, have humor but without folly. Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion, and I wrote it down, let me see. It's, I move that we do have a defense team. But I would like to ratify it, that we do not go over the funding of $100,000. That every man and woman should have the right to be defended.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, a long one too, isn't it?
I'm trying to figure it out.
I'm sorry, you all.
So, am I understanding you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Paul Tim, that RS-23-094, that you made a motion to ratify the agreement to not to go over $100,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And that all men and women have the right for?
Yes, to have a defense, and that this should go for this fiscal year, and we will revisit and convene for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
That's a lot, but it's needed.
Hold on. Madam Secretary, did you, okay, thank you. Can I get a second to that motion? Oh, Councilmember Boyd.
I have a statement.
We have to have a second before we can go forward?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
And make my statement. Thank you, Madam Mayor. While I may not personally agree with the particulars of this ordinance, the city is currently in a position where the majority of citizens who voted for Prop. A expect us to defend and uphold their vote, having followed the proper procedures prescribed in the Colleen City Charter to establish the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to one. Madam Secretary.
RS 23108, consider a memorandum resolution readopting the governing standards and expectations as amended.
If there is no discussion, would, council, would you like to go through the slide deck again? Can I get a motion? Councilmember Boyd.
Make a motion to approve RS 23-108.
Councilmember, Mayor Paul Tim Kopp.
I second the motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to one, with Mayor Paul Tim in opposition. Madam Secretary, public hearing.
PH 23038, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the F Y 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Colleen, Texas, amending the F Y 2023 annual budget of the city of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause and establishing an effective
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Mrs. Drake.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This budget amendment presentation I did last week, I'd be happy to do it again if you'd like.
No, thank you. Public hearing is open. Let's see if anybody wanted to speak on that. Public hearing is closed. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Boyd.
I make a motion to approve PH 23-038.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 23039, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance authorizing the 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan describing use of funds and authorizing application for an allocation of community development block grant, C D B G, and home investment partnerships, home program funds. First of two public hearings. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance authorizing submittal of the 2023-2024 program year, P Y, annual action plan describing the use of funds and authorizing the application for allocation and expenditure of $1,255,131 in P Y 2023-24 fiscal year 2024 community development block grant, C D B G funds, and the application of $607,371 in home investment partnership, home program funds, the use of $479.43 prior year 2021-22 program income for a total expenditure of $607,850.43 of home funds, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Smith, this is the first here, you're going to ask a question?
I'm sorry, your question?
Is this the first hearing on this?
This is the first one. Yeah, so there'll be no vote tonight. I think that was the confusion. It said down there there was a vote to consider the ordinance, but that will be at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I know you went through the slides before.
Yes, ma'am, if you all would like to?
I have one question. The council, y'all, okay, no slide. Why the council was really big on the demolition of buildings, and I noticed that it was not included in this. Is there a particular reason why?
Madam Mayor, I would like to defer that to the C D A C Committee who made that recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Frederick is present.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm the City Manager. Go ahead, please.
That is one of the council top priority in demolition of these old buildings. So I'm just curious to why it was not funded.
The reason why it wasn't funded is we were told that there would be money from the general fund that would take care of that so we could put all of the money into the reification program for public facilities, and that's part of public facilities.
Mr. Cagle.
Yes, ma'am, he's correct. We have, year after year, we've increased the amount of money we've been putting in the general fund. The other question was on transportation, senior transportation.
Yes, sir.
I think their issue was, the answer was, there weren't enough money to go around. But we are working right now to find some different ways to make up that deficit for the senior transportation. I believe that was a question last week.
Yes, sir, that was one of the concerns that we want to ensure that they can get from A to B. Thank you.
If I may, we had $360,000 in requests, and we only had $188,000 to spend, so that's the reason why.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll now open it up. The public hearing open. Jack Richards. Good evening. You have four minutes.
I would like to start by thanking the council for giving me this opportunity to speak in support of Colleen Creators and the work that they do, particularly in regards to the community development block grant. It was not very long ago that I found myself living in poverty, and Colleen is a difficult place to be poor. The only thing I found myself in want of more than food was kindness. When I found myself back on solid footing, I knew that I wanted to make sure that no one else had to go days without a meal or a kind word. I have gotten to know how Colleen Creators, as a volunteer and Americorps, works for over a year now. Their gardens grow the food that feeds hundreds of this city's most vulnerable, people who are who I was. We have a motto at Colleen Creators, give what you can, take what you need. Over my time there, I have found that those with the greatest need often give the most, their time, their experience, and most precious of all, their trust. If you have not lived with an empty stomach and a tight chest, you cannot know the true value of that trust. We protect that trust like fragile seeds, tending to it with care, love, and experience, helping it grow into sturdy roots and far-reaching branches that extend beyond our little building on 10th Street. We are truly creating something beautiful that Colleen can be proud of. I would like to extend to the members of this council the same invitation that we give to every community member in Colleen. Come grow with us. Thank you.
That was a very powerful speech. Councilmember Boyd, did you have a question for him?
No, ma'am, I have a question for staff regarding this.
Okay, but we're in the middle of public hearing, can?
And you're correct. I'm sorry about that.
Yes, sir. All right, Ms. Kristin Wright. I apologize. Good evening, ma'am. Four minutes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens who are doing this difficult work of governing, very difficult work as a community. Thank you. I'll be speaking on behalf of Colleen Creators, but I won't do as good a job as Jack just did. I won't. And I thank you very much for those beautiful words. And also just the process as a nonprofit of working with the community development department, this funding, and hopefully some insights that'll help everyone work better going forward to work collaboratively, serve our most vulnerable people, Jack beautifully spoke to. As many of you know, Colleen Creators was first founded in response to the food desert situation in North Colleen in the spring of 2020, and when the grocery stores closed. We're a local, citizen-driven, and member-led agency with a mission to combat food insecurity, post-traumatic stress, and disenfranchisement. Those are our three priorities. Since forming, our members have created four communal community gardens, no gates, no fences, no fees, and a school-based garden with assistance from the city. Thank you. Most importantly, we provide food. Right behind it, we provide skills teaching to garden, to cook, to live a healthy life. No matter your personal resources, neighbors can help each other through the toughest times if we're connected. Most recently, we created a community garden and space, safe space recovery studio in North Colleen, just past Henderson's Restaurant. In addition to the community garden, our studio has become a daily drop-in center for truly the most vulnerable people that Jack just spoke about, as well as some of our privileged arts and crafters who like to come and show their skills off and share some of their beautiful accumulated resources from their craft rooms, and we're very grateful. So amongst these low-barrier, enjoyable services in the garden, in the drop-in studio, we develop the relationships that he talked about. And when people are ready, we offer certified peer specialists to do case management. We teach people how to ride the public transportation system if they get a referral for blood work on Clear Creek that they don't know how to get to. And as good as our M H M R case managers are, they don't leave their offices a lot. So someone else has to go ride the bus with someone to get to that appointment until they know how to do it themselves. I'm here tonight to say the process could work a lot better with, for nonprofits. I oversaw a nonprofit for 20 years, a lot of reimbursable services, never ran into the challenges, not with Medicare, Medicaid, or other block funding reimbursement base that I have here. There's a lot of room for improvement. With, I think the C D A C needs to be more involved. I would encourage that there be a look to the Art Commission and that structure of monthly meetings by the advisory entity so that there's a checks and balances, where the money's going in the community development process, that the content, that there are appropriate RFPs completed, and healthy competition in our community between the city and nonprofits, that we have more dialogue on what's needed and best practice. And right now, the C D B G process is pretty closed, and, is my four minutes on?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I have an extra one minute? I'm just asking.
No, no. Yes, yes. Okay, so yes.
Thank you so much. The primary issue is we didn't get reimbursed because there was a assumption, a thought that there's a conflict of interest between my partner and I, or domestic partners, so we didn't get reimbursed for what we were contracted to get reimbursed. We didn't know about that. That's okay, but it did mess up our cash flow. As a dues-only-based entity, $4,000 not getting reimbursed has hurt us gravely. So one, any assistance that could keep us sustained in any way, thank you, whether it's city or elsewhere. Number two, I just ask to really think about that process and even encouraging smaller nonprofits to participate unless it's really changed, because it can kill a very strong, beautiful nonprofit if it's not done well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hello.
You have four minutes.
Thank you. Marcella Cook, Colleen resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of- I'm here to speak on behalf of Colleen Creators. They provide a safe space, non-judgment space for people to go in. I have personally seen people with really severe social anxiety go in, and they slowly come out of their shell by going there repeatedly. The community gardens, again, as she said, are open to everyone. It doesn't matter if you can afford the groceries or not, all you have to do is go and pick what you need. I personally have seen people with disabilities and homeless that go there, and they're not wanted any other place, but they go to Colleen Creators and they volunteer there, and they start doing activities that they can do, even if it's just watering the plants in the garden. Me, myself, I felt pretty useless when I moved here because nobody would hire me, no one would let me volunteer, nothing. They accepted me right away. I now teach two classes. I teach the jewelry-making class and the journal-making class. I'm helping boot up their online Etsy store so that they can get more funds from the stuff that is created from the people that go in there and donate it to them. I am also spearheading their volunteer recognition program because a lot of these people, they're faceless, they're homeless, they're, you know, they don't go out of their house very often, and they go there and they get recognition for what they do, and a lot of other places won't do that. On average, I volunteer there personally around 20 hours a week, all unpaid, all on my own. And I have seen several people that have gone in there to volunteer. I have seen several people that have gone in there off the street because of the gardens, and they go back for the craft classes. They go back for the peer support. They go back for the art journaling and to help them process emotions and PTSD and things like that, that they cannot get these services elsewhere. And these are all provided free of charge. You don't have to pay anything. It's give what you can, take what you need, and Colleen Creators is one of the best places around. Thank you.
Thank you. Michaela Richards. Good evening, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Good evening, my name is Malika Richards. I am here to speak on behalf of Colleen Creators. I'm an instructor and also a community member and Colleen resident. I could give you a catalog of the programs Colleen Creators has cultivated in the last few years, but you've heard plenty of that. I can tell you how it's transformed neighborhoods around its community gardens and its 10-3 Street Center, but you've heard about that. I could even share with you my personal participation in many of the programs it offers for healing from trauma and the creative outlets that allow others to access support and recovery that would otherwise be hidden behind the walls. But other people have done that already and are far more capable of doing that than I am, so I'm going to keep it simple. If you've ever been poor, you know how difficult it is to find a place to sit. I remember being poor and being shooed away from doors, cafes, shops, malls, and parks. I've walked on the sides of highways and heatwaves to make minimum wage, to bring back food for a hungry family after standing for eight-to-nine-hour shifts. Sitting had to be justified, timed, and in most cases, paid for in some way. I see echoes of this every day in Colleen. For those sitting here today, I would like you to imagine having to explain the worth you create for someone else in order to justify every minute you spend in your seats. I have experienced abuse and violence from the time I was a toddler. I have witnessed violence and abuse on others, including other children. I've witnessed death the first time I saw someone killed, I was three years old. I've been denied opportunities, healthcare, and education. Throughout, I've found ways of surviving. I've worked multiple jobs to put myself through school, to earn my master's degree, and my career. I did this in a world where simply taking a seat was a luxury. These barriers did not make me stronger, they gave me PTSD. They continue to traumatize others. As we speak, people in Colleen are harassed, abused, and killed, having never experienced a world in which safety was even a possibility, let alone a literal seat at a table. That is what Colleen Creators has given me and many others: a place in which to sit, be, and when we choose and are capable, to do. They do not demand my labor, payment, or apology. Finally, I see people like myself, those who have experienced deprivation, abuse, loss, and pain, who are more than those things, who can finally be more than those things to someone else because they are afforded the basic human dignity of sitting together in peace. This is Colleen. This is our community, and through Colleen Creators, I see what it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Elektra Thonberg. Good evening, ma'am, you have four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Elektra, and I've been attending Colleen Creators for the past few months. I've been diagnosed with complex post-traumatic stress disorder, and going to Colleen Creators has helped me to be able to cope with my illness and find support when doctors and medicines fail to help. The people I have met at Colleen Creators are exceptional people. Most are individuals going through difficult circumstances, whether it's homelessness, substance abuse, or trauma, and overcoming them. Colleen Creators is unique in that it provides emotional support, activities that help people heal, and a wonderful environment for recovering from trauma. The things I have been through in life are not for the faint of heart, and I struggle finding support groups for my past trauma. Colleen Creators is amazing because they offer support groups for survivors of childhood abuse, provide outlets for youth that are facing difficulties, and forming friendships that are healing and uplifting. To support this wonderful group financially for a year would be the equivalent to the cost of two used cars. That's what it would cost to provide food for communities and to help heal people, some who are going through the worst times of their lives. When you help others, it creates a catalyst for a positive chain reaction. I know that without Colleen Creators, my healing would have been stifled, and I would have missed opportunity to connect with brilliant individuals who excel and are assets to the community. I've noticed such a positive impact in my life from this organization and seen firsthand how it brings people from all walks of life together who are struggling and make them the best versions of themselves. I'm able to reclaim my life through art, gardening, support groups, and finding a space where I can express my authentic and truest self. Historically, there has been a loss of talent, creativity, and ideas that could have helped others, but due to political agendas and lack of understanding have been lost over time. Don't allow this opportunity towards funding fall by the wayside. With gun violence and mental health issues at an all-time high, we need a space for people to help guide them and give them a beacon of safety. This place is more than an art studio, it's a place for hope and healing, and it's needed more now more than ever. Please consider who you could be helping in the future by supporting Colleen Creators. The next best idea, the next best candidate, or the best future could be planted in this studio. It could be catapulted from someone recovering from homelessness, poverty, trauma, or substance abuse. The power to create a better future is in your hands, and there's no better time than now. Thank you.
Thank you, Elektra. I thank you all for really sharing your story, it was really built in the heart. That takes a brave person to share that, and I thank you all for Creators, for Colleen Creators, for everything you do for the community. Did I overlook anybody else for comments? All right, public hearing is closed. Councilmember Boyd, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to hear from staff why the recommendation was zero, and just to verify they were requesting $20,000 for Colleen Creators, I'm sorry, to be specific.
Yes, sir. The amount that they requested was $20,000 this year. One of the, from their presentation, you'll see the applications and responses scored on four dimensions, and the CEDAC president may be able to speak more to their recommendation, but I will say from a staff standpoint, when we do applications and pre-applications, one of the criteria is to make sure that the nonprofit has the capacity to be able to complete their project. When a project is not completed, or they can't expend the funds in a timely manner, that does put the city in a timeliness issue. When we report to HUD, we have to expand our grant funds, and that puts us in a timely issue. And then, we have to give money back that we don't expend. So a nonprofit's ability to be able to work their project properly and efficiently and expand the funds in a timely manner.
Thank you. I'll hear from the director as well.
Yes, sir. Could you please come back to the mic, sir, please?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. As Ms. Smith stated, we have a scope of a project every year that they come in and request funds for. Last year, they requested funds for an irrigation system and some other things that went on through there. They weren't able to spend that grant. As a matter of fact, they've only spent $7,000 of a $22,000 grant from last year. We didn't feel like, in talking to them, that they were going to be able to finish up last year's grant by the end of this fiscal year. And they had requested, again, for this year, $20,000 for irrigation system expenses, contractual fees, fees for Americorps compost, soil, cedar pickets, signage, and other materials to build new and replenish old garden beds, water bills for the community gardens, printing and mailing outreach materials. Since this was very, very similar to what they'd requested last year, and they weren't able to, it doesn't look like they're going to be able to finish that by the end of the fiscal year, we felt like we could use the money elsewhere for projects that could be completed within the next fiscal year very easily, and those people would be able to use the funds in a timely manner. And as Ms. Smith said, that is one of the requirements, sorry, that you're able to spend your grant within that fiscal year that it's allotted for.
Did that put the city in any lesser position pursuing funds for the next year at all?
It can, yes, sir. If we, if we get too far behind on our timeliness, it can cause HUD to come down and actually reduce our grant.
But did it do that this time?
No, sir, it did not. We're not in that position yet.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. I'm going to make this comment to the council. What we heard, what I heard, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, was testimonies. And thank you for sharing your testimony so that we better understand. There's no way I could believe or think any of that was scripted or what else. Thank you, okay? And thank you as well, Ms. Wright, for your vision with Colleen Creators. I remember 2021, this was a concept, and she went through to create an organization, eventually get a building, get people behind her, get these community gardens set up across the city, which are in existence and operation. Strong testimonies. I hope that some way, the city can find funding to help support what they're doing, because these are situations that helped change their lives, as we heard and witnessed here. And I understand it was $20,000, and we've got other organizations on here asking for tens of thousands, and rightfully so, with what they are advocating for and what they need. So this is just kind of forecasting in the very near future, if this possible, to see if we can support it in any way that we take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Sir, could you, before I go to the next person, can you repeat what you said about the $20,007? I couldn't get all of that. Why were they denied? I missed that part.
Madam Mayor, the issue was, was they still had grant funds left over from this fiscal year that it doesn't look like they're going to be able to spend by the end of the fiscal year, so they'll have to be returned back to the city coffers for reappraisal in the next budget cycle. So with them asking for additional funds, there were some concerns that they may not be able to spend that, along with what they already have allocated towards them. So we chose to move that money into other programs that we thought could spend the money in a timely manner.
Okay, so last year, it was $20,000. They only spent $7,000.
Yeah. The grant last year was for $22,263, and as of now, they've spent $7,470.
But they keep the remaining of that $22,000?
They do up until the end of the fiscal year, yes, ma'am.
And if they haven't spent it, it will come back to you?
Well, after a time, yes, ma'am, it'll come back to be reprogrammed into some other.
Okay. And what, is that the law, or why does it work that way?
It's HUD's regulations-
Oh, okay, okay.
-on the funding, so that it doesn't get left out there to hang for year after year after year.
Regulations, okay. All right, thank you, sir. Councilwoman, you may have some more questions, sir. You may, because we have three other councilmembers that have questions. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, madam. And so I share the sentiment that you expressed, Councilman Boyd. I went and I saw it with my own eyes, and what, not only the folks that spoke today, but the other people that are not here, to hear their voices and hear their testimony was amazing. When I'm on the dais, I'm always constantly asking for our organizations that have a call to, a call to serve our less fortunate neighbors, to come and to work together and to pull the community together. And this organization, I have seen it with my own eyes, has definitely done that. So I guess my question, sir, to you is, you said that they haven't used the funds yet, I believe they have until October, to utilize them. So if they have that window to utilize them, was there a significant, was there a reason or explanation that gave you an understanding that they would not actually complete this job between now and October?
In listening to the staff reports on their use of funds up to this point, it did not look like to the committee that they were going to be able to finish the funding for this fiscal year. And because we had other needs out there, we chose to use that money for other needs. It's a great program. There's absolutely, it's a wonderful program, it's doing great things in the community. But we have to weigh money that can be spent within the time that it's allocated for, and if not, we need to move it somewhere else where it can be spent to help other people, and that's what we're trying to do.
Sure, and I can understand that. And so when something like this happens, just, I'm not certain how the process works. So when something like this happens, does the actual recipient of the funds have the opportunity to come and explain where they're at in their process as far as allocating those funds, so that they can explain where they're at in that process?
They do somewhat during the application process that we did in the first part of May, and I'll let Ms. Smith answer that question.
Yes, ma'am. Quarterly reporting, so we get to see how the funds are being expended. I do want to say, at the time of the application, less than 10% of the grant had been expended at the time of the application and the deliberations. So that was a major point. Additionally, we are now doing monthly reporting so we can get more of an idea of how quickly those funds will be extended.
I understand we're budgeting, we're looking on paper versus practical, so do we take into consideration things like the cost and inflation of supplies and services and availability of service providers? Do we take that into consideration, even though we know the grant window is not quite here yet as far as October is concerned? Is that something that you factor into your consideration?
We do take that into consideration, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilmember Segar.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Colleen Creators, because you guys do a great job, you know, those are great stories. Unfortunately, yeah, we got a lot of great organizations out here in the city, and we have so much money that, you know, this organization, or this committee, is tasked with spreading out, because I know that this is not the first time we've been up here and hear this from other organizations, and we got a lot of organizations here. Also, I'm looking at that do great, great things, you know? We have the Families in Crisis that do a lot of great things, and they didn't get any money either. And so it's hard. I understand the task that you guys are charged with, but, uh, my, my real question is, you know, to make sure that the people that spoke understand it the way that they're explaining it, because I know a lot of times we do have people that get these grants, and then there's some kind of miscommunication or something that goes on, and they don't use it. And I hope that, you know, what we're hearing as councilmembers, um, is, is legit. You know, it's something that you guys understand too, that you do have to spend this money. If you don't, then that's where they're, they find themselves deciding, you know, here's these organizations that, because I know we had one, we gave a hundred thousand to one time, and they didn't spend it. And I know they had a roomful of people that gave great stories, and we as council committed to giving them the hundred thousand that you guys originally turned it down, only to find a year later, they didn't use it. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, we're communicating what is required for you to be eligible next year to do that, you know, because I, you know, you guys do a lot of great things. So there's no doubt in my mind, uh, the, the many great things that you guys do. It's just dealing with all the red tape that this committee has to do in order to do that. They just can't go based on their heart and all that. They have to follow certain procedures because we do have a lot of other, uh, organizations that are vying for that same money, and they understand the process, and they're going to go ahead and do what they're required so they can come back and do it. So I just want to make that clear, that it's nothing against you guys, because you guys do a lot of good things in the community. Thank you.
Yeah, y'all are doing great things down there, uh, in North Colleen, um, and, uh, and the testimonies are so great, uh, and it's a need. It's definitely a need. I saw you shaking your head, um. Could, Madam Mayor, could she explain? I know she was saying, um, could she explain why, um, that she was not able to get the, uh,
So the question is, can she explain? The deadline hadn't happened yet.
Right.
So are you asking her to explain why she won't meet the deadline or why?
Yeah, why she won't meet the deadline. Are you going to meet the deadline? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Ma'am, you have to come to the podium and speak, because we're recording.
I wasn't sure I could. Thank you for the invitation. I would love just a minute to explain, because I didn't get through my written testimony. Um, yes, what happened is our first quarter, we had submitted for over four thousand dollars, and it was denied because it was determined that the, the grant allocation was to pay for a, a volunteer coordinator. To coordinate all what you're hearing about, the board decided to hire one of our founders, uh, James McWilliams. We are married, not legally. We're domestic partners, so in Texas, we're married. Our board dealt with that conflict of interest. We spoke with lawyers. I recuse myself. He left the board. He was the person the board wanted to hire. I volunteer. It is a startup process of a new foundation, and I agree, this is a hardship, and I learned that rule after the fact that their interpretation. I also shared, though, there is a, the city could have sought a waiver, and there are, we meet six of the seven criteria under HUD, and they could have still paid him out of the necessity of the service, the financial hardship that it would cause outright, and the lack of an alternative doing this essential service for people's essential needs. I asked that that be considered, and I don't believe it was followed up on, but we are getting ahead of the cash flow. We do need some help, but we have supporters who are helping. Any help is welcome. We will spend that money this year. We've learned this process as this, it's administered in this city, and we will do a better job next year.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
My question was probably a little bit more for staff. Um, I recall when I served on the CDAC committee, uh, years back, applicants had an opportunity to present their projects and talk about funding, um, with the CDAC committee. Is that still the case?
Yes, sir, that is still the case.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to double check.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarez. Anybody else on the council would like to speak? The only one, did you speak, Mayor Protem? Do you have anything to say before I go on, move on to the next item?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I like the Colleen Creators. I like what you stand for, and, and I love to know that sisters and brothers are helping each other. That means a lot. I probably will be abstaining from the vote. We're going to wait and see. I give to the, the Colleen Creators every month so that others can eat and to receive. So I, I have nothing but accolades for them and those persons who use the facility.
Thank you, um, Mayor Protem. And the only thing, um, Councilmember Boyd.
Just two, uh, just a few quick words. Uh, thank you again for the work that you all are doing and will continue to do, and thank you as well for the transparency and giving us a better understanding and a willingness to work with the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, Councilmember Segar.
I was just.
That was not, that's just the first hand. We have to have one more, and, uh, that would be next, uh, not next week, but the week, the week after, uh, the next. So, any more questions? Okay. So, ma'am, we thank you all, and we'll see y'all the week after next. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-three zero four zero. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by ILI LLC on behalf of CPB Investments Inc., House Cross Associates LTD, and Melva L. Van Dyke, case number Z twenty-three dash fourteen, to rezone approximately thirty-one point zero zero five acres out of Thomas Robinette Survey, abstract number six eight six, and Lot One, Block One of Elms Creek Edition, Phase Two, from AR dash one agricultural single-family residential district, R dash three A multifamily apartment residential district, and B three local business district, to planned unit development, PUD, with SF two single-family residential district, R three A multifamily apartment residential district, and B three local business district uses. The property is generally located east of South Clear Creek Road and south of Janelle Drive, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately thirty-one point zero zero five acres out of Thomas Robinette Survey, abstract number six eight six, and Lot One, Block One of Elms Creek Edition, Phase Two, from AR one agricultural single-family residential district, R three A multifamily apartment residential district, and B three local business district, to planned unit development, PUD, with SF two single-family residential district, R three A multifamily apartment residential district, and B three local business district uses, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mr. Revell briefed us last week. Would you like for him to brief us again? All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Good evening, sir.
I am present. Joe, yes, good evening. I'm present. I'm the developer, Joseph Seer, founder of ILI Communities. I have nothing further to add to my presentation. I did clarify that, uh, staff provided the information regarding the park contribution, and so I believe all questions have been answered, but I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. You're so kind. Thank you. Public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Council, what is your pleasure? Uh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as I mentioned during the, the council workshop, there is a shortage of multifamily housing available in West Colleen. Uh, this development will increase our inventory in multifamily at retail space to complement the new community, as well as, uh, it's in a location that will benefit proximity to, uh, different areas on Clear Creek and West End, so that both police and fire have, um, provided supportive feedback regarding response times and expectations, which is important, and potential traffic issues will be addressed with TIA and in coordination with Tech dot. At this point, I'm comfortable with the proposed development, and I make a motion to approve PH twenty-three dash zero four zero.
Councilmember Segar.
I second that long motion.
I second that. All in favor yet? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gonzalez. Count, Mayor Protem? Councilmember Solomon. Okay, thank you all. All in favor, yes? All opposed, no? Motion carries five to zero. Uh, Councilmember Alvarez did not vote on this item, but he is still here. Can I get a motion to adjourn, because we do have a second meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Councilmember Boyd, a second by Councilmember Solomon. All in favor? Motion adjourned. We'll start back up in ten minutes. We're just going to give Mr. Francisco and them time to set up for the second meeting.